Alright, let's get this thing started. Sending out the message, I got a bunch of messages sent out today because I have to let the family know what's going on. Man, oh man, oh man, listen. We have to support our own media, we have to support our own, our own information outlets. Because uh, some foul, some foulness is in the air. And I'm gonna read, uh, I'm, I got to let y'all know about what happened last night. We're gonna talk about that, because I got, like, I got a lot of stuff to do today, and I got an interview, um, uh, for the show today. You know what I'm saying, and I gotta work on, and I gotta finish the newsletter. But we just had the ADOS Town Hall Meeting last night, and listen, let me go and turn it on right now. I'm just, I'm just about to, I'm just letting y'all know, family, it's going down here in Columbus. And I will let you in, right after, right after we get started. So we want to make sure that we are streaming on all cylinders. Alright, we are, it is said that we are now streaming on... Alright, it says we are now streaming on Facebook, on both ways, on Hot Team, Giammy, and Giammy Journey. We are streaming on Giammy Journey on YouTube, and we're streaming live on Periscope. Now, let me make sure y'all will know the title, uh, before we get too deep into this. The title is Daily Toast. Daily Toast, Ujima, Stardate 12, 1211193. NBC4 Drops Coverage Of ADOS Town Hall Meetings Because They Feelings Got Hurt. Man, listen, alright, I'm some, alright, uh, uh, we about, I, I'm clowning some motherfuckers this morning. Because this shit is just ridiculous. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, so I'm gonna read some disclaimers. And I'm going to throw my opinion, and I'm throwing it hard, and if it sticks, then that's on you, right? Because uh, fuckery is afoot, and I have to address it, I have to address it, we have to address, we have to look at it. Because this is, this is one of the reasons that I keep, I keep trying to tell y'all, we have to support our media, we gotta support our shit. You know what I'm saying? Our thing, Cat End, right? Because in a minute, family, we are, uh, Byron Allen talk about the four D's, denial, discredit, demonize, and I like to say delete, but Byron Allen says destroy, the four D's, right? We are at the beginning here in Columbus, you know, I mean, at least as, as ADOS with the, what we're doing now, denying, right? We at, we at the denial piece, right now, hell, you know, you can see some, uh, discrediting going on right now too. Alright, but hold on, let's go down, I want to make sure that everybody can see what's going on. Let me unpin, I'm gonna unpin this one, I got up here, because I want to get into this, but we gotta do, we gotta do the song, we gotta do the song. That's the, that's tradition, we gotta do the song. So we gonna go on, and we gonna stick to our guns, as much as I want to run past it, I want to make sure that you get, get your morning, your morning toast song, right? Then I'm going in, I'm riding hard on fools this morning, so you know, make sure you like and share. Well, you know, I ain't gonna ride too hard, because I gotta go to work and shit, you know, but I'm gonna ride hard tomorrow. You know, if I ain't too tired, because I got a busy day today. Um, but I'm riding hard, family, this is, it's getting ridiculous. And um, what's, what's gonna end up happening is, if we don't start taking action to protect what is ours, to support what is ours, we will soon begin to lose our voice. And once again, we will fall into a sweet, sweet slumber, right? That will ride us out to the end of our existence in this country. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, alright, so um, I'm gonna do an unboxing too while we here. So, um, y'all get ready, so here we go. Let me see, make sure we're streaming properly on, yup, we up on YouTube, get your points. We gonna start a couple of the contests soon, there's something I want to share with y'all today too, so here we go. Drink your water. Come on, come on, drink your water, but first, take your breath and drink some water. Take your breath and drink some water. Take your breath and drink some water. Take your breath, drink, 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 drink. Or should I say, breathe, breathe, then drink. Now, grab your glass for some water. Get your pitcher of that water. Lift that pitcher of that water. Simply pour some water, it's simple. Drink, 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 you notice that's copper, right? We thought, that's copper. Lift, pour, then drink. It sounds like I could pass down to my children. Now move your body, drink some water. Move your body, drink some water. Move your body, drink some water. Family, move your body. Drink, 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 drink. Or should I say, move, move, then drink, ay! Now, raise your glass and toast your ancestors. Now raise your glass and toast your ancestors. Now raise your glass and toast your ancestors fam, just raise your glass. Drink, 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 drink. Or should I say, raise, toast, then drink? Oh man. Take your breath and drink some water. Lift and pour yourself some water. Move your body, drink some water. Raise your glass and toast your ancestors. Breathe, lift, move, toast. The family has stayed healthy under the four pillars. Breathe, drink, eat, move. Drink, have your weight in ounces, eat a coachly appropriate diet, but hey. Take your breath, always, lift and pour. Move your body. Toast your ancestors, drink up. Drink your water, drink, 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 drink. Drink your water. Take your breath. Lift and pour. Move your body. Toast your ancestors. Drink your water, family, listen, 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 for those that are new to Giammy Journey, it is your responsibility in order to be able to pour these libations, to, to take this toast, we have to take care of ourselves. Family, when a lot of us are suffering from ailments that could be cured by preventative, by proper preventative maintenance, I feel it's my job to get up here and sing a simple song every day till some of y'all get it. Four Pillars of Health. You're not breathing, you're not drinking enough water, you're not eating a coachly appropriate diet, you're not moving enough. So I have to get up here and dance every day so that you can get the idea and get motivated to do it, that's my responsibility. You know why? Because you're my responsibility. And the more of us that's toasting, the more powerful we become. Let's get, alright, so before I get into that, I want to go on and do an unboxing real quick. Family, look, I got my little, got a package from Stream Labs, yes I did, yes I did, Stream Labs, give them a round of applause, right? That's a program that I paired with another program so that I can restream the video to many different locations at one time. That's why probably it looks like it's on my left, so that means that it's probably right there for you, alright? Um, so I want to do this unboxing right here, I want to do it later, but I want to get the people's stuff that they supposed to get this stuff. I want y'all to know how serious we are here at Giammy Journey, you know what I'm saying? Because I owe some people some stuff, so I wanted to make sure they got it, let's see. Let's see what's in here. Because it is that time, it's that time of the year, alright. A navy, uh-oh, this is a navy blue, long sleeve, Daily Toaster shirt. I know who that is, this is Kwame's prize, right here. This is Kwame's prize, right here, so I can't open it, I'm gonna let Kwame do the, do, do his thing. Okay, alright, got my bill, let me keep that over there, alright, uh, and here's mine. I have me a red, long sleeve, Giammy Journey. Why he is not as big as mine? I'm wondering. Alright, that's that, he got American Apparel, so this is that navy blue Cat End shirt. I think it's the navy blue Cat End shirt, I got the red Cat End. And Ms. Tracy got the red hoodie, now I go open up Ms. Tracy's hoodie, it's her hoodie. I'm gonna go and present that to her today, um, but I just want y'all to see, I ain't come in a nice little box like that, so. Just wanted y'all to see, about to put some orders in for the contest, but this one is that Kwame won the contest. He wanted a navy blue long sleeve, so I got him the navy blue long sleeve, um, good quality, so I'll let him go and open it. I'm excited to give it to him, I will see him on Coombia. Oh shit, speaking of Coombia, I gotta make some arrangements, it's a lot of stuff going down this, this week is gonna be a very, very busy and hectic week. But anyway, family, let me tell you, so last night we are, now, I am going to send out the text and letting everybody know where they can see it, because uh, it was supposed to be covered, not the whole time, you know what I'm saying, the interviews and stuff like that was supposed to go, was supposed to take place. So, we're, questions are being asked, but hold on, so I want to read the statement off of the ADOS Ohio, um, piece, and I, I'm gonna go in, alright. "For immediate release, response to NBC4 removing coverage of ADOS Columbus Town Hall and interview with Mark Stevenson aired date 12/10/19." "ADOS Columbus, Ohio denounces any allegation of racial insensit- insensitivity by any members of the organization at the State of the Black America Town Hall held at the Columbus Metropolitan Library. Today, ADOS Columbus had a town hall entitled 'State of,' hold on, 'State of Black America.' 'State of Black American: Change For A Better Tomorrow.' You Don't Know Nothing." Okay, thank you Thug7, um, Detuck7, whatever, um, today, ADOS, hold on, let me see where you are, Deduct. Your name is Deduct? Detuck7, "You Don't Know Nothing." Y'all see that? Yeah, somebody say hi to Deduct, he needs some love, or she, or whoever it is. But we are doing the right thing because we are being troll, thank you troll. Um, "State of Black American: Change For A Better Tomorrow." "This event brought members of the community together to learn about why black votes matter, and panelists discussed numerous topics that affect the black community to include healthcare, criminal, police, and prison reform, voter suppression." Let me do something real quick. Shouts out, shouts out to those that are coming in on Periscope. Alright, so let's go. "Today, ADOS Columbus held a town hall entitled 'State of Black American: Change For A Better Tomorrow.' 'This event brought members of the community together to learn about why black votes matter, and panelists discussed numerous topics that affect the black community, include healthcare, criminal, police, and prison reform, voter suppression, gentrification, and education, to name a few. With approximately 10 minutes left in the event, audience members were allowed to express their concerns. One gentleman asked whether there were groups in the area where he could go to talk about black issues without white folks being in an attendance. This gentleman was and is not affiliated with ADOS Columbus. We welcome any one of any ethnicity, race, and nationality to join us in our endeavors to fight for issues affecting the black community." Alright, however, so I'm, because I'm gonna make my comments, so I'm gonna read through it first. However, after the event was over, ADOS Columbus founder Mark Stevenson, whom had been interviewed earlier in the day about the event and organization, received a phone call from Tanisa Jennings, an executive producer for NBC4 in regards to the comments. Mr. Stevenson expressed his sincere apologies and stated that the comments were not indicative of what ADOS Columbus stood for, nor were they the comments made by any of the panelists, which included himself. He informed Ms. Jennings that the group had planned on having other events throughout the election season, starting in January across the city to inspire black voters to get engaged. She told him to keep pern form. Mr. Stevenson then subsequently contacted Rob Snead, whom had interviewed him earlier in the day to get a correction made to the article Mr. Stevenson wanted African, um, Mr. Stevenson wanted African descendants of slavery to be replaced with American descendants of slavery, because that is the correct expansion or expression of the acronym to which Mr. Snead said he would correct. Shortly thereafter, Mr. Stevenson was informed that the entire feature on ADOS Columbus and the Town Hall were being taken down because our reporter, well, our reporter was offended by the comments of the panelists and were made to feel uncomfortable. After explaining again that the comments were not made by the panelists nor members of ADOS Columbus, Mr. Stevenson was assured that the situation would be, um, rectified. Yet, the article entitled "Time Hall Pushes To Improve Lives Of Black Americans" was removed from the NBC4 website, and planned follow-up to the events which were scheduled to be featured on 11pm broadcast was canceled. "We feel that this is a gross mischaracteriz- mischaracterization of our organization, mission, and vision. It was our intention that the issue affecting black voters would be the focus of tonight's Town Hall, now the community at large will not get to hear about it." Oh, family, 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 listen to me, listen to me, listen to me, first off, you having a meeting about the black agenda, the state of black America, you send a white reporter. White reporter get their feelings hurt, because they feel uncomfortable, you know what I'm saying? Now, this is my question, why send a white reporter? Maybe you don't have no black ones, you know what I'm saying? Now, also, if we're talking about the state of black America, there is going to be some uncomfort in the room. There's supposed to be uncomfort in the room, family, you, right? Right? Because, because many of us are uncomfortable, you know what I'm saying? So the whole piece is, we're having a sincere conversation, a real conversation about what's going on in our communities, and we can have a little bit of coverage? You send a reporter who is so sensitive, you know what I'm saying, that they can't cover the news? You know what I'm saying? Donald Trump is making fun and clowning everybody, cussing people out, and he still get covered. We have a simple Town Hall, and we can't get covered, huh? This is why I'm telling you, this is why I'm telling you, this is why I'm telling you right now, we have to focus on building our own, well, actually, we, we're working on it now, developing and supporting our own media, because that's the only way we're gonna be able to get the word out soon. Because you can't even discuss the black agenda with people with different opinions about how to approach that black agenda, with people with different opinions on how to approach reparations, with people with different opinions on how to deal with, um, uh, 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 different groups within that are, that are labeled black, with different, with different, um, opinions and ideas of how to deal with the Democratic Party, with different opinions how to deal with the Republican Party. We can't have that discussion without people feeling uncomfortable. And if the white people get uncomfortable, they could shut the whole con- conversation down, you know what that's called? That's called, "I'm white and I say something." "I'm white and I say that you should not be heard." "You hurt my feelings." "Feelings." "Whoa, whoa, whoa, feelings." "You hurt my feelings." "So what, you were in slavery for 250 years." "Jim Crow was nothing but a name, but you don't have to hurt my feelings." Are you serious? This is what, this is what we deal with as adults, you know what I'm saying? I'm just, thank you, Ms. Stephanie, you know what I'm saying? I'm just sitting up here, just tripping, because when we talk about black issues, people get sensitive. Better yet, no, my fault, not even black issues, when we talk about ADOS issues, because people don't want to deal with the reality that we, see, because, family, listen, I had to come with, I had to come to terms with this, and I know some of y'all gonna get butt hurt by this, you know what I'm saying? Especially some of the trolls out there, that's cool, right? I want y'all to think about this. If we look at the state of black America, we have to either be so inept that after 400, I mean, because I want you to think about this, it's 30 to 40 million of us. I'm talking ADOS, now, we got immigrant groups that's coming in and stuff, they're, they're black, but they don't fit into the same category, and we could, we could have a discussion, that's part of the discussion that hurt people's feelings, right? You know what I'm saying? Because we got people who want to come in at the end of a process and get full benefits of that process, right? Now, there's certain rights and citizens that you should get, undoubtedly, right? But now, well, I'm, let me just, let me say this. Family, after being out here over 400 years, only controlling 2% of the wealth of this country, either we have to be totally inept, totally, uh, uh, totally retarded in how we handle our lives, that is, is a damn shame, or we have to admit as a country that something has been constructed to put us in this situation. And I know you done heard this over and over again, but you got to look at the other side of that. Are we truly that inept? That incompetent as a group? That after 400 years, we only control 2% of the wealth? Or could it be that for 250 of those years, we were the wealth, literally? And for 75 more of those years, we were not allowed to compete? And then for about another 50, maybe 35 or so, miseducated, labeled, demonized, and imprisoned, alright? Come on now, family, we can't have a real talk? You know what I'm saying? And without people getting so into their feelings that they can't hear us? We got to understand this, our story is the American story. And we have to be bold enough to put it up in people's face, but family, the only way we gonna be able to do that is if we start supporting our own media outlets, if we start using this, we start becoming citizen reporters. Because y'all wouldn't even be able to hear the Town Hall Meeting if I didn't set up my little bit of shit and other people didn't record it. Because NBC4 didn't even want to let people know about it, don't even want to let people know about, they don't even want to even deal with future events. Because they heard that individuals that call themselves ADOS could be in the room and be kind of upset because they're looking around, not being listened to by the Democratic Party, they're looking around and see that they have been redlined, they're looking around and seeing that their grandparents and great-grandparents were not allowed to compete, and they are still being told by everybody around them, "That is your fault." Come on now, come on fam, that's ridiculous. Um, brother says he sent in $25 to Ms. Morgan's campaign? Or I'm not showing up on YouTube for some reason? Oh, they say I'm on YouTube, my friend. You know what I'm saying, hey, anything's possible, because family, we are, we gonna, this is why I'm telling y'all, listen to me, listen to me. Our time together may be soon coming to an end, what do I mean? What I mean, family, we talked about the four D's, deny, discredit, demonize, destroy. We are in process. Process has started, I told you yesterday, when I woke, when I went to bed, when I went to bed yesterday night, I went to bed a man. When I woke up, I woke up a bot. By the time, between the time of me going to bed and me waking up, the word was all over the internet that anybody that is talking ADOS, anybody that's talking reparations is a Russian bot, and I didn't even notice it. I didn't even know I was a Russian bot, I've been, I done went to Ohio State, I, you know what I'm saying? I've been working for years, I didn't even know that I was a Russian bot. But according to what every, according to what's on the media, right? This is what the segment of individuals like myself who want to talk about reparations, this is the category that we're being put into. So, you know, a lot of people are avoiding the conversations, then I get the friend that texted me to check on me, like I told you yesterday, because he liked... because he like, "Brother, you affiliated with this thing here, and I know you don't be dealing with no fuckery." This sound like fuckery to me, brother. Say, damn, what's going on? What's going on? Hmm, deny. Discredit. Demonize. Last night, I was all but called, and you know, and I know, may, you know, maybe they didn't mean it like that, but I think, I was all but called a Trump voter. Is that mine?
No, it's Jesus.
Oh. A Trump voter. Because I said that I would prefer the vote-down ballot than to waste my vote and throw it at somebody that wasn't gonna do nothing with it. What do you mean, brother? I tell you, that means that I, I'll go to the polls. I'll vote for issues in Columbus, in the state of Ohio. When it comes to presidential candidates, if none of them talking serious about reparations by then, they ain't getting my vote. I'll write my name in there. I'll write A D O S in there. Well, I do like they did in the past Columbus election. I put Mickey Mouse Club or some silly boy. No, I ain't gonna vote for Disney because they already taking over everything. We, last thing we need is everybody put Mickey Mouse Club, next thing you know, Mickey Mouse president. You know, so we don't want to give, we already got the Great Pumpkin in office. We definitely don't want Mickey Mouse in office. Um, born in Akron, attended Akron City Schools, then Ohio State University and the School of the A D O S Life. Man, dismiss, discredit, discredit, demonize, and destroy. See, and we are in process. Family, we need to start supporting our black, I mean, like I said, because when I, when I say our time may be coming to an end, once, once you discredit it, alright, how do you earn your daily bread? Once you demonize? How do you earn your daily bread? See, because this is where we're headed. Alright? Because yesterday they told you a bo- I'm a bot. Last night, supposedly it came out, "I'm a Trump voter." Because I'm not gonna waste my vote on a Democrat that don't want to take my issue seriously. What's next? Hmm? What's next, right? You know, I'm liable to walk, I'm liable to walk into a place and they be like, "Oh, we no longer need you." Come on, family? I mean, y'all really don't, y'all really don't, y'all, y'all really don't think that these type of things are possible. This is what I'm talking about, far as us supporting our own, where are our staples? Who's our media? Who's talking for us? Who could talk up for us? Many of us stay silent because the talk is to put ourselves in the crosshairs of destruction. Right? So now, um, let me see, I want to check maybe this, because he, my brother said, is not, is not showing up on YouTube, and that's cool. I'm, 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 I'm satisfied with it. Alright, family, so let's go and do this toast. I'm about to get up out of here. Clearly, we gonna have to go to school soon. Uh, so let's go and get us some ambrosia. You know, mine is unfiltered. Whoa, got me a piece of Skoby up in there. Alright, building up my microbio, preparing for this winter, these winter months. We moving fastly into Kwanzaa season, oh, my fault, Kwanzaa season, family, it's Kwanzaa time, it's Kwanzaa time, it's Kwanzaa time. We put up a Kwanzaa commercial. Go on, like and share, please. Share with people, even if you don't live in Columbus. Hype up Kwanzaa all over the community. All, all over the nation. Alright, so, first, giving honor to the creator by whatever name you choose to call this creator. We raise up our glass, we salute that creator, and we say, "I say." From there, family, where do we go? You know where we go. We raise our glass and we salute all of our personal ancestors, and I'm about to read off this list. I want to thank everybody who has participated in building up this list, because we have come from just a few ancestors, just so many. Um, Miles Brown, Miss Anne, Roberta Texas, Anna Davis, Hern Brown Senior, Rosalie Tilly, Georgia, Willie Walter, Chris, Manny Gass, Anali Nak, Chris, I'm Finn, Cleveland, Jenny Brown, Mark, Ellis, Wash, Ellis, C. S. Ellis, I'm Bob, Ron, Jean, the Games, Hern Brown, the Second Barker, Two Hs, Wash, Ellis Junior, Katie Ellis, Nikki Ellis, Demond Jones, Jeremiah Tap, and John Filar. Monte Cup, Menel, No More X, a Pet, Ma, Rob, Lee, of Core, Dr. Mary, Alz, Williams, Coach Joe Kamau, Elder Millie Dixon, Tony Clark, Pastor Yusuf Weston, Elder Agony, Elder Ron Coleman, Elder Robert Donovan, San Alfred, Ruff, Racer Junior, J. Edwards, Carl Harris, Grace Lund, the Anis Harris, William Bill Moss, Phyllis Rose, Strading, Lucy Wright, Derek, Air Pulling, and Luxe Brother, Miss Eden Brooks, Crawling, Miss Marie Nelson, Mr. Frederick Crowley, Seem, Miss Jay Brunson, Mr. Liza Johnson, Miss Marie McDowell, Janice Foster, Charles Jordan, Kail Smith, Walter Smith. Alright, let me tell you also, what was said that was so offensive. You can watch the whole thing for yourself, because I'm going to send out the link to all the people that's on the Black Sing- Signal, and I'm also gonna repost it up. But a brother that is new to Columbus asked a question, or made the statement that he didn't want to, to the fact, I'm not, can't, I can't quote him verbatim, but he wanted to be in a place where he could talk about black issues and what's going on with black people without white people being in the room. This is one of the terms, this is one of the things that offended the newscaster. And I know it was other things that, that offended the newscaster, and I'm, I'm also gonna point this out to some of the people, because this, that was a statement that was told to Brother Mark of A D O S. Um, that was the offensive statement. That was the least offensive, that was one of the most least offensive statements popped off in the room. I'm gonna talk to Mark about some of the other statements, because I listened to the po- I listened to the broadcast this morning, right? And I want, you know, because it's, it's some stuff I got to share, but I'm gonna go a little bit, we gonna go a little bit deeper, because we gotta look, we gotta really look in this, you know what I'm saying? How, we got these news agencies with these professional reporters that get into a situation and get, I'm, I'm, I work in a professional capacity, and I'm, I'm uncomfortable every goddamn day. I can't just leave an assignment because I'm uncomfortable. Maybe that's A D O S life. You know what I'm saying? Some of y'all work with people that die. You can't just walk out the room because you uncomfortable, because these people are dying. Some of you work with people that are sick. You can't just walk out the room because you're sick. But yet, people who carry the news or the information of the community can get uncomfortable. Not even being life-threatening, not even watching somebody in pain. They could get up and they could decide that they're gonna leave the room, and then, as a group, they could decide that they're gonna cut out your whole group. That's called dismiss. That's called dismiss. Deny. Y'all don't exist. Right? But we do. Right? And like I said, I'll continue streaming as long as I possibly can to the few people that do listen to me, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Alright? And those that support me, those that's getting this, that, that Giame gear, those that's getting that daily toaster gear, I support you. Stop living to stop lying to these people. Oh, Detuck, I don't even know who you are. Do anybody know this Detuck? Somebody help this man. Somebody help him, right? But this is, this is an issue that I have with, um, Periscope. This is like, I mean, it's a, I get a lot of trolls on Periscope, Detuck. But hey, I'm gonna go and continue with, am I lying about the ancestors' names? Am I lying about two hundred fifty years of slavery? Am I lying about seventy-five years of Jim Crow? Am I lying about the, the, uh, the school-to-prison pipeline? You know what I'm saying? Am I lying about the wealth of black America? Please, be specific about, you know, because, or, 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 or am I a bot? I, I mean, just saying, I mean, am I lying about not being a bot, or am I really a bot? Please, Detuck, enlighten us. Everybody, please, pay attention to Detuck. Because he's a truth-teller. Alright, here we go. Walter Smith. Walter Smith, Richard Trigg, Francis Johnson, Mary Franklin, Jimmy Williams, or maybe all these li- all these names are a lie that people sent me. Hmm, okay. Jimmy Williams, Daniel Ford, George Gibson, Anna Loretta Clark, Anas McCray, Chris Clark, Frankie Justice, Katie Justice, Derek Rendeman, Virginia Rogers, Reverend James Smith, Louis Henderson, Kevin Spratling, Mary Elizabeth Walker, Raymond Walker Senior, Sanjay Carter, Michael Ford Junior, Kellen D. Russell, Suzie B. Smith, Teresa Clay, Mel Del Hayes, Mel Del Hayes Junior, Herman Copeland, Mildred Copeland, Jenny Clay, Bird Beady, Salwell, LeVita Farmer, Igo So Su, Shell Harvey, Aunt Charmaine, Aunt Evelyn, The oldest Hasbury, Harvey Hasbury Senior, Leonard Dick, Saty C. Islam, Terrell Dunbar, Will Thomas, Sarah Berry. You know, enslaved black first blacks. Oh, come on, finish the, finish the history, Detuck, so that I can destroy your ignorance. You are lacking, my friend. Go back to playing your video games. Please. Either go back and play the games or finish enlightening us. I want everybody on here, please, listen to Detuck, because he got the truth. Woo, good grief. This, this is what I'm talking about. Alright. And Detuck might live next door to me, by the way. The oldest Hasbury, Harry Hasbury Senior, Leonard Dick, Saty C. Islam, Terrell Dunbar, Will Thomas, Sarah Berry, Mark Walsh, Merle B. Thornton, Pro G. Thornton, out of Johnson, Florence, M. Carter, Joanne Thornton, actress Lewis, Juanita Wright, Robert Wright, George Wright, Mary Eliza, Frederick Davis, Mary Elizabeth Rogers, Mary Esther Keach-Larice, Linda Watson-Hammons, Jerrel Giles, Watson, Sparrow, Slimmy Seven, Louis, Andrew Holmes, Purimore, Percy Moore Junior, Mildred Orange, Booker T. Bowman, Charlie Hunt, Sammy Stover, Heather Pearson, Sergeant Thornton, Richard Thornton, Levine Hall, Freeman Bankster. Freeman Bankster. Where we at? Mary Mar Sophia Peacock, Willie Thornton, Napoleon Kennedy, Mark Ramsey. What does, what does slavery in Africa got to do with the wealth of America, Detuck? And the wealth of America that was built up on the backs of black folks? If white folks was so righteous, why didn't they just stay out, Detuck? Huh? Help us out, Detuck, educate us, Detuck. You know what I'm saying? I love you trolls, because I know that I'm doing the right thing. Oh, you goddamn, you goddamn game boy. I just, I, I, you know what I'm saying? I hope that you finally win at the game so that you can just go to sleep. Oh, my God. Freeman Bankster, Mary Mar Sophia, Peacock, Willie Thornton, Napoleon Kennedy. And Detuck, you better start playing during, during, during this session here. This might not be nothing you want to play with. I'm just trying to warn you, Detuck. Might want to chill, my friend. Napoleon Kennedy, Mark Ramsey, Paul Ramsey, Matt Ramsey, David, uh, Ramsey, Charles E. Thornton. Get him off our daily toast. Oh, I ain't got to worry about getting him off, Miss Cynthia, because we already know some people just don't understand and don't believe in nothing. They don't mean that they ain't real, right? Um, Charles E. Thornton, Frankie Quell, Jiraniya Thornton, Bernie Squells, Ernestine Jackson, Frankie Johnson, Teresa Mormon, Leon Johnson, Charles Bell, Vivian Ramsey, S. J. Johnson, Dorit Johnson, Leon Johnson, James W. S. Senior, James Parham, Dana Jones, Henry World, James Farmer, Mary Chappelle, Leon Graves, Vessi Johnson, Hayley Lestner, Mary Morland, Paul Morland, Elder Caleb, Rosemary Marcheneer, Elder Amitet Wellman, Fred Douglas Trigg Senior, Thelma Triggs, Thomas and Lula Berry, Lacey Ann, I don't know how, Franklin Ruslin Davis, Fred Douglas Trigg the Second, Vina Triggs, Reverend Eddie Moore, Helen Fuller, Eugene Jackson Senior, Richard Ellis, Silas Alexander, Charles Maxwell, Percy Alexander, Arthur Reynolds, Stanley Lockhart, Ricky Lockhart, William Lockhart, Woodrow Lockhart, Brenda Porter, Deacon Hargrove, Carla Soye, Andrew Parker, Doris Donald, Ellis Murphy, D'Amico Russell, Deeley Minaries, Gina Ruth Jones, Jana Callahan. We are on, uh, William Walter West. That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. Watch. Get the wa- you, you get to watch him in action. William Walter West, Nigel Perez, Elder B. C. G. Filoni, Jim Robinson, Gladys Johnson, Valerie Clark, John and Mary Sullivan, Dirk Johnson, Antonio Johnson, Delise Waters, The Free Design, Zanna's Bostick, Anna Bostick, Winifree Scannobay, Wilson Haley, Emma Highes, Phyllis Lee, Eugene Spratling, Calvin Spratling, Charles Wood, Penny Brown, Roy Lee, Printup Junior, Marion Johnson, Webby Long, Myita Catney, Janice Carter, Michael Carter, Leon Peanut Carter. Can you wake the girls up? Because I gotta get them, I gotta get to school earlier. Margaret Carter, William Carter, Lisa Jordan, Charles Lee Mosley, Dorothy R. Blair, Rans from Evans Senior, Sam Evans Senior, Neilan Blair Senior, Edward Stevens, Sue Ann Stevens, Joe Davis, Timothy Butler, Gene Holmes, Dana Jones, Peter Charles, Christie Nichols, Cardinal Robinson. Rosemary Charles, Ada Pearl, Bob Ingles, Jack Wallace, Warren Finch, Warren P. Finch, Tim Ingles, Audrey Finch, William Billingsley Junior, Jennifer Sensibar, Hazel Gass, and Jay Bradley, Brian Watson Junior, Niko Parsons, Jason Kathy Bradford, Thomas Bradley, also known as Algo Bukey, also known as Gypsy, Reverend Roosevelt Word, the First Age, Trish Frank Smith, Mother Bertha, Michael Leonard, Dave Brown, Carter June Cox, Ruth Cox, Paula Cox, Ronald Urban, Judy Hubbard, Irene Johnson, Francis Booth, Jefferson, Dan Wilkerson Senior, Emma McLendon, Jerry Doyle, Amina Robinson, Mary Nichols, Patricia Williams, Shabaka Ture, Greg G. Two Gibson, Donna Hill, Richard Libersley, Erby Tommy, Erby Boy, Erby Jim Goshay, George, and Hallie Johnson, Archie Margaret Armstrong, Diane Scott, Arga, um, Erica Armstrong, Claire Fox, Jean Evans, Archie Beck, Anna McGill, Charles McDaniel, Christine Catrill, Albeca, Arizona, Arthur Arnold, Hattie Reed, Charles Reed, U. Leonard, Andrew Baker, Patricia, and Edward Brooks, William, and Bob Hatch, Kimber Vernon, Bradley Kim, Janie Here, Tom McKay, Mrs. Sturgis, Sally Mae Baker, Ethel Baker, Creola Baker, Geneva Baker, Erin Eno, Baby Hatchett Senior, Marley Miller, Howzy Hatchett, Cleeter, Miller Gibson, Alex Nixon, John Bowie, Lester, Rachel Saunders, Dorita Ross, Reola Ross, Robert Nelson, Francis Stevenson, Lee Ward Stokes, Nidhi Johnson, Fletcher Swan, Maddie and Charlie Scott, out of Casey, Thomas Cofer, Vivian Stevenson, Mona Ann Lewis, Cornetta Lyman Lewis, John Jackson, William Dallas Lewis, Mary France, Jappell Jackson, Michael Slade, Joanne Perkins, Richard Jackson, Martha Ford Dawson, Big Mama, Ninny Harris, Eva Ford, James Hairston, Margaret Thompson, Mary Williams, Leroy Key Heep Senior, Albert Moore, Miss Vanilla, Alice Motley, Geraldine Elizabeth, Douglas Thompson, Earthton Houston, Lettard Oz, Light Oz, Jerome Oz, Jim West Stanton, Joe Jamel Oz, and Pierce, Donald Carter, Lady Green, Anthony Green, Beth Vaughn, John Dewey, Rue Beard, Tim Butler, Remy, Laura Newton, J. B. Foggy, Thomas Newton Senior, Barbara Naim, Janette Sanders, Jerry C. Sanders, Roy Poo, H. J. Brantley Senior, Henry Wilson, Rufus Jenkins, Minnie Wilson, Captain Sanders, Mira Ellis, Elizabeth Sanders, Henrietta Erby, Mildred Armstead, Margaret Armstead, Catherine Anthony, Ree Brown, Charles Walker, uh, Charlie Walker Senior, Charlie Walker, Cecil Russell, Don Irvin, Harun Phillips, William Ford, Margaret Logan, Phyllis Barnett, Lee Irvin Senior, Michael Irvin, Ozella Watson, Hugo Watson, John Caldwell Senior, Robbie Lee Caldwell, and Avan Mitchell, Ronald McCormick Senior, Sabrina Easy, Rashawn Easy, Javon McCormick, Barbara Ann Reed, Dorothy Ann Reed, John Reed, Shakka Mahari, John Reed Junior, Patricia Reed, and while business Senior, after H. McNair, Lord Fernandez, Joak, Jacqueline Broadish, Reginald Alber, Masri Cofer, George Swan, and Monique Grayson, Charles Scott, Charles A. Scott, Michael Morgan, Charlene Morgan, Subway Elvis McNabb, Annie Ferguson, William Ferguson, Shelby McKendon. Man, alright, so Kwame lost connection. Uh-oh, we got some stuff going on. Ah, man, family, we on the move. Alright. So I hope you would try to go back to YouTube, but Juela Giles, James Carswell, Alberta, well, obviously, they can hear us on, um, Periscope. Juela Giles, James Carswell, Alberta Adams, also known as Icic, Elder Shakka McNair, Anthony Brown, Jonathan Ford, Lottie Goshay, Cousin Tony, Michael Johnson, James Jimmy Johnson, Barbara Shank, Lewis, Ronald Sheldon Junior, Damian Top, Christina Banks, Joseph Bingum, Quincy Mama, Mama Aunt Lady, Abraham Isaac Kunduk, Aunt Barbara Lewis, Renee Johnson, Joy, Ryan Ross, Riggins, Jomonte, Marcus Price, Nesswears, Mysha, Michael, Demetrius Beard, Herb Jepson, Ralph Mickin, Ralph Mickens, Ed Walker, Quacey Sample, Candace Seven, no, Candace Simmons, Severn Clayton, Leonard Jones, Sally Garner, Melvin Scott, Elder Clarence Locken, Elizabeth Johnson, Frank Smith, Dave Strice, Denise Coray, Nathaniel Hassan Turner, Kalida's in transition, Nigel Turner, Demetrius Little Flan, Alberta Woods, Geneva Simmons, Daniel Tilly, Angela and Gat, Shreepa, Oscar Kane, Audrey Gripper, Dominique Nichols, Ruth Elaine Johnson, Teresa Sambo, Aunt Maxine, Uncle James, Henry Mark III, Tamara Dowdy, Mont Nicole Harris, Julia Taylor, Richard Bozeman II, Carter, John Carter, Mr. Thornton, Johanna, DeChandra, Lynette Lewis, Henderson Mosley, Charles Jordan, Henry Essex II, Fanny L. Webb, Dana Walton, Alati Sue Walton, Emma Walton, James Randolph Giles, Sunny Peak Walton, William Walton, Fred Powers, Elijah Wayne Keem. Fred Powers, Elijah Juan Keeman Como, Alberta T. Davis, Charles Davis, Willie R. Mackey, Dr. Creamy Mackey, Victor, Victor Bolden, Tricilla Kitty Berger, Lucy White, Robert Lee White, Emma Jean White Towson, Roger White, R. L. White, Jesse White, Ruby Jewel White, Johnson Carl White, Desi Woods, Tilar Woods Lennox, Jim Woods, Lizzy Woods, Juanita Alexander Brown, Sethi Ann Wright, Richard Dorsey, Annie Simpson, Jamar Simpson, Regina Hopkins, Joseph Simpson, Nettie Dorsey, Eleanor Hopkins, Edward Webster, Ellis Webster, Ivy Webster, Anila Willis, Ethel Lane, Samanda, Demond, Ethel Marshall, Steve Dougie Shelton, William Bill Walker, Carl Rico Johnson, Kim Gray, Stuart A. Johnson, Edward Young III, Isaac Jackson Senior, Juzella Murrow, Wayne Young, Christina Young, Thomas Young, Frank Murrow. Family, we raise our glass to all of our ancestors and we say, aye she. From there, family, we move to the present moment. We are right now going to give all of those Ujima born a round of applause. And the special applause go out to Miss Cynthia Johnson. Alright. What that mean, fall back? Alright, so, we raise our glass up to the present moment, family, remembering our pact with the past, right? Our pact with the past, because we got, we got work that we got to do. And we know we receive that mission or receive the responsibility of that mission from our ancestors. And we know we got promises to keep for our future generations. So we have to work in this moment to move forward in our development, right? So we raise our glass to this moment, because this is all we got, and we gonna utilize it to our fullest. We raise our glass and we say, aye she. From there, from there, family, from there, family, we raise our glass. And who do we raise our glass to? We will whip through the future generations and we toast our children, our children's children unto affinity. Now, we raising our glass. And we are toasting. We're toasting all of our relations, taking care of all our relations, raising that glass and we saying, aye she. From all of our relations, family, we move to that selfish toast. What is it that you need in this moment, right now? What is it that you need? We raise this glass for you. We raise the toast for you. Get it out, family. We say, aye she. From there, family, last but not least, we want to salute the most magnificent, the most beautiful, the most uplifting, the most inspiring individual in the room. Right? I'm raising my glass up to you, 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 and you, right? Because, you know what I'm saying? It wouldn't be possible, what, for y'all, for your support that y'all, that y'all show. So family, we raise up our glass and we say, aye she. Aye she, aye she. Family, I wish you peace, power, joy, and 100 years. Nice and mellow. Alright, I want to thank y'all for joining us. I will be sending out an email today, well, uh, a text today so that you can see what NBC Four in Columbus, Ohio got so offended about. You know what I'm saying? It's just, it's just incredible, family. It's just, it's just incredible. Right? You, you only had one cuss, so that was my brother aside, but aside, everybody know aside cuss. But other than that, even brother, I too didn't cuss, right? I'm sitting up here like, damn, but you offended. I'm hurt. Stop. You hurt my feelings. You don't need to hurt my feelings. I just want to feel good about where we are in America today. We don't need to reflect on the past, it happened so long ago. We don't have to bring up that system issue. And how dare you want to be having the space where y'all could talk by yourselves without anybody else? How dare you? You should feel guilty about that. See, family, ain't no guilt here. I know every group need to get together and have their little conversations, right? Just like some of our white allies is gonna have to get together with some of them white folks out there that just don't know and have those conversations without us being in the room. Right? Right? So, so we raise up our glass, family. I, I'm just, I'm just salute each and every last one of you. Make sure you like and share. Because I want to, people need to know that we have a media that is steep. Well, we already knew it. But you know, I like evidence, I like to be able to present. This is evidence. You know what I'm saying? Because in a minute, they gonna tell us Kwanzaa's too black. I'm just saying. I'm just, I already heard that shit. I'm just letting y'all know, right? Kwanzaa too black. Can't be too black, too strong in America, right? So once again, since this, since she went on here, give you another round of applause because it's your day. My fault, I went through the moment without really, um, giving the moment his justice. So, family, which activate your recticular formations. It's time for us to identify and find Ujima, right? We want it, is active in our community. Every day, we want to be able to focus on it. We want to be able to be empowered by, we want to share with others, right? So I want you to, to, um, turn on your recticular formation and I want you to track it down. I want you to take a picture of it, I want you to talk about it, I want you to, um, 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 record it. I want you to share it up on your timeline. If you're Ju, uh, uh, you can also share it on Giyami Journey. If you are Ujima, baby, put that up on, put that up on the timeline too with a picture, you know, you doing something, you know, um, um, representing your principle, representing your day. If it's your day, be proud of your day. Hashtag Ujima, hashtag Ujima Day, hashtag Ujima Fun, hashtag Ujima Baby, hashtag Ujima Born. One of those, you can use one of those, right? Post it up. So now, on Ujima, today is Ujima. For those that don't speak the language, Ujima means collective worker responsibility. The minority principle today is righteousness. Uh, the M7 of the day is respect, right? The color is blue, got this light blue, right? I'm, I, I'm gonna order another blue shirt. Vibration is the hermetic law. Quaku is the male name. Akua is the female name. So I want to make sure I did this moment, this day, and the child of this day, right? By making sure I got all the information out. So, family, this is brother, hi, Tim. I'm up, I'm out. My son got to run the sweep before he leave. You know what I'm saying? So, I'm gonna go and get off. He hoping I don't, because he don't want to do no work. I see it in his face, like, wow, I don't want it. Why I got to run this sweep? Peace.